Okay, we are live and we are recording. And we are going to start the October 7th, 2021 meeting with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody here. Nice to see full house. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from September 16th, 2021? Ruth Seiko and Nandy Dryden. With a motion in a second.
I would just request that we be sure that the resolution that I drafted, a formal resolution, that we discussed at the last meeting regarding the bidding process, I had sent that to the, to Mole to be added, and I just want to be sure that that gets added when the minutes are approved.
Okay, got that, Jody?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. Move on to citizens comments. This is your chance, Adriana. You want to unmute? Tell us what brings your meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. So I was invited by Ruth. My name is Adriana and I work with the Anadaga County Health Department. I am a member of the Creating Healthy Schools and Communities team. So we at the Health Department were lucky to be re-awarded a five-year grant called Creating Healthy Schools and Community from the State. This grant allows us to work in the town of Van Buren, the city of Syracuse, and on Anadaga Nation, where overall we look to increase access to opportunities for physical activity and nutrition. So overall, just making it easier for people to be healthy. One location we're working with is Canton Woods with Ruth. And she invited me here to talk about a walking trail that we want to install outdoors in their back area behind Canton Woods, where we would be installing some metal signs that have health and wellness messages to just give an opportunity for people to walk. So it could be used by, you know, members, obviously, at Canton Woods, employees, or even community members. I heard that might be kind of walking around back there through that little trail to the apartments.
Very good. That sounds like a terrific idea. That's one of the big fundraisers that they have every year is the Walk for the Woods. So people are sort of familiar with walking and associating it with the woods. So I think having a little trail right there on the property. My, my only thought would be make sure that Chuck McCauley, who's our DPW supervisor, that wherever it's going to go isn't going to present problems with snow removal and that kind of stuff.
And I believe Ruth has already connected with him. And then I'm gonna, I'm keeping her informed on the entire process. So we'll go out there with the installer before anything really happens, just to kind of map out where it'll go. So they'll have a vision of everything right from the beginning.
How soon would you do something like put that trail in?
We're hoping before the snow falls. So everything is in the approval process. We just redid the signs a little bit for some artwork, which, you know, I've been in communication with Ruth about, and we're just waiting for kind of our financial approval, and then we'll go from there. But the, our installer seems to think he can have it done by the end of November at the latest.
Sounds good. Any questions, Chuck?
I do have one question. I did, I did meet with Ruth over there today and all looks fine. But as I'm sitting here, is this a summer trail? Or is this something they want to use year round? The only reason I ask is it would be difficult to keep it clear because it's, it's grass and the machines would sink down and the people wouldn't be able to walk on it. And when it froze over, it'd be nice. But I just wasn't, wasn't sure.
I mean, I'm not sure if Ruth wants to answer here, but I would imagine she had mentioned that people are kind of walk back there anyways sometimes in the winter. So I think it would be more of, you know, how the center wants to use it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Just a general question, if you don't mind. We have longer trails on the town of Van Buren side that are still in the village. Are you limited to Canton Woods or are there other opportunities?
No, I'm open to anywhere in that's located within the town of Van Buren. So I can, Ruth has my contact information and I'd be happy to share that along because maybe there's improvements we could do or in grow. But absolutely, we're open to anything within the town of Van Buren is our only restriction.
So this is, this is based on income? That's, that's why Van Buren is not, and not Lysander, for instance?
Correct. So it's just something identified by the state in terms of our kind of target area. So the state identified our target zones.
Good. Well, it works out nice for Canton Woods.
Yes.
Just add one more thing for people to have access to and to go along with all the great programs we have anyways. So.
Absolutely.
So specifically thinking about the long community park area. So just to be an area you might want to look into.
Yeah, we're working with the Van Buren Central Park. I've been working with Heidi and talking about a walking trail at the park as well. So we are working with Van Buren Park, Central Park, I believe, right off of.
Yep, right off of Canton Street.
Canton Street. Yes, we are in touch with Heidi and I'm Chris over there.
Okay, great. I think it sounds great. Anything we can do to, to encourage people to get exercise and stay healthy and maybe live longer is, is all.
Absolutely. And if there's any ideas, you know, please feel free to send them my way.
Well, Mark, whatever you're thinking, Mark.
Absolutely.
Put it down in an email or something and if you've got something specific about community park you think might work, then let's, let's make sure that they know about it. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. And so far, everything that we've started to work towards has been very positive. So I'm very excited about this as an opportunity that can only benefit the senior center and as Mark's pointing out, you know, other parts of Van Buren that are within the village. So thank you, Adriana. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's been fun.
Thanks for thinking of us.
Absolutely. Any other questions for me or? I don't want to take up too much of your guys' time, so I appreciate the opportunity.
We got lots of time. But if you have no other questions, then thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you.
Absolutely. Thank you all. And please feel free to send me an email. Ruth can, you can feel free to share my email with anybody in the group.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice night.
You too.
That's nice. Anytime we can add to our, I mean, we have, right now, probably have some of the nicest walking trails in certainly in Anadaga County, maybe in the state. I don't know, all along the river like that. And then to add something specifically for the senior center and then if we can expand other of our trails in other directions, that's all great stuff. So love to hear it. Trustees' comments. Let's start with Mark Wilder.
Good evening. I would like to request an executive session to update the board and the status for contract negotiation. And other than that, I think the agenda items will be sufficient. Thank you.
Okay, that'll be item F. What we got next? Megan?
Just the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, Ruth Seiko.
Just the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, Andy?
I'll keep it to the agenda. Thanks.
Okay. Mike Shepard?
I'm just making slow progress on this cable franchise negotiation. It's a work in progress. I'm trying to keep everybody up to snuff as far as where I stand. Other than that, if there's any questions, that's all I got. And I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Bruce Devens?
I'm not really a comment on the agenda, just a comment. Over the last couple of days, I've read some interesting articles about village succession from townships. Kind of brought to the forefront for me when I hear about the enthusiasm the towns show toward the senior center, having not increased their contributions over years. When I hear that they can't put forth any help for the Little League fields, makes you wonder exactly what does a village resident get for the tax dollars that they pay to the townships? And so I was just looking at succession, I, other communities like Austin. It's just interesting to look at. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Oh, sure. Raise, raise a hornet's nest and then cut out.
Plant seeds, that's what.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm going to add an executive session with Mark's personnel issue. So that'll be item G. Big weekend for social activity. If you're into ghosts, the ghost walk is tomorrow night and Saturday night. It's a $25 ticket to, for about a 75-minute walk with eight stops along the way at eight different homes to hear a ghost story related to that building. I've heard that there was, the comments came in last year was, we need scarier stories. So I guess they're striving to come up with more impact. You can still sign up, I think, at BaldwinsvilleArts.org. I, I know people who went last year who thought it was very good, very entertaining. You know, wasn't, it wasn't all night and it was, you kept moving. Tonight, they have, you probably saw the tent down at Baldwin Canal Square. This is ghoul's night out. It's supposed to be for the ladies. Lot of fun. They didn't tell me all what's going on under that tent, but it sounded like they were going to plan on having a lot of fun. And you know, I think it's kind of nice when we have stuff like that in the village to, for people to look forward to. And then I think it's the the 23rd, is that a Saturday? 23rd of October? That's the window painting session put on by, I believe, the town of Lysander. And I know that, that Shelley Hoffman's involved. There's also that day's trick-or-treating at businesses. So the kids can come down in their costumes and they can paint, they throw on their mask and then go trick-or-treating after they get done painting windows. For those of you who grew up in Baldwinsville, you remember probably for, it's been a long stretch where we, we had window painting. I mean, it was, I think at least, I think my sister did it years ago, Wendy, and maybe not, but it, but it was at that time it was going on. And it was always a great tradition to drive through and see families hanging out and watching the little kids painting ghosts and pumpkins and goblins and stuff all over different windows. Apparently, several of the businesses have called to make sure they are included this year because maybe they weren't last year. So check it out with the Chamber of Commerce. Check it out with the town of Lysander on both the window painting and the trick-or-treating. And then obviously, our trick-or-treating will be the following week. Just so people know, it's, it's usually like six to eight. And we ask people not to start before six and not to go after eight so that people in their houses can know how long they have to have the lights on and, and be manning the front door. And it seems to be enough time at our house to go through enough candy for about 200 kids between 150 and 200 every year. So two hours is plenty of time. So we got that to look forward to. We have, I don't know if Chuck was going to mention this, but I will. We are looking for a Christmas tree for Thanksgiving weekend for that Saturday night when we have the tree lighting. We need a nice big pine tree. If anybody has one in their yard that would like it to be removed, get ahold of Chuck McCauley up at the DPW and he'll come check out your tree and see how easy it will be to get it out of there. And then you, it's kind of nice because you get to brag to everybody when you drive through. There's our tree right in the middle of the village and everybody's looking at our tree. So it's, it's kind of cool. So again.
Chuck, tell Chuck I'm going to call him tomorrow because my neighbor's got a tree that ruins my yard and it's, would be a perfect Christmas tree.
Yeah, it'd be nice if your neighbor knew.
I'm going to make sure I call him and take a look at it.
Yeah, okay, let us know.
We did hear from the county on one of our grant applications, we had put in a it was like a capital improvement grant and we put in for money for fixing the trim on Village Hall that it gets kind of beat up with the ice and leaks and stuff. So we go and rebuild some of the wood, do some painting, maybe even add a little bit of insulation in a couple areas, you know, depending on how that works. We also put in for money to do some work at the visitor's center to, you know, a little bit of upkeep over there, replacing some bad boards. There's a light that's bad, you know, rusted out. So we got money to do some work there. Also to replace the sign atop the amphitheater. To put a new Baldwinsville sign up there. That was approved. The only thing that didn't get approved, I thought it was a whole package that they looked at, but apparently they were able to break items out. We are, we did not get approved for pickleball court, which tell, kind of tells me they were looking for things to improve property you already are operating and they weren't looking to help you add new parks to your facilities. So that, that gives us some, we'll probably be talking spring before we do most of that stuff. But it's nice. And this is all ARPA money that the county had that they wanted to share with everybody. And we're still waiting on the Main Street grant to bring back that one for everybody. It was 22 businesses. Yep. Greg and Chuck and fellow from our engineering firm worked on, came up with a very, very nice submission. Certainly, if we don't get it, it won't be because we didn't put in a nice effort. But it was a $500,000 grant with 22 businesses benefiting. On top of the seven that we had the first time around, by the end of it, we would have 29 businesses that would have been upgraded. I'm hoping the county looks at that and thinks, we basically can say we, we really redid all of Baldwinsville because it will be just about every business in the village will have had some facade work upgraded. And to me, that would be awesome. So we're still waiting to hear on that. And that's all I have. Move on to department heads. Our attorney, Bob?
I'm also, I, I just want to comment on the cessation of a, of a village. I think what happens is, is conversion to city. And it's my understanding in talking with one of my predecessors that there had actually been discussions in the village to converting to a city in the past, probably the distant past, but it was kind of interesting. Anyway, other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Code Officer Greg?
Just a couple things. I, I wanted to, you know, let the village, you know, public know that we are looking for an alternate member for our zoning board of appeals. If someone was looking for a way to, you know, serve in some capacity with the village, they can contact the clerk's office and let them know that they're interested and we can get their information for the alternate for the zoning board of appeals. It looks like it's election season again, and I wanted to remind the public that temporary signs, including election signs, need to be placed on private property with owner's permission. And they need to be placed, placed at least 10 feet back from the roadway or behind the sidewalk. And other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay, yeah, it's good, good to have those reminders about the signs. As we know, they'll all end up where they don't belong if we don't say something. They still, some of them will, but I appreciate that. Thanks, Greg. Village Clerk, Jody?
I just wanted to remind everyone that taxes are due, their village taxes are due by November 1st. If they don't pay them by November 1st, then they will go to, on another county for collections.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that'll be off.
Okay, thanks, Jody.
Yep.
We'll move on to our treasurer, Anna.
Hopefully, all the trustees have received. Last night, I emailed everyone copies of combined reports for the general fund, water and sewer. I hope everyone has received them. I did not receive any back, so hopefully. This is a combined report. You're used to getting month by month by month. And for the sake of time, so I get them all complete. This is the Williamson report that generates after I get all the figures in. I should have August done, hopefully by Monday, and then I, September will follow and we should be current. And I do apologize again for being so late. The department heads will have hard copies in your boxes. They're in there right now. I put them in there tonight. I did put a I put a hard copy in all of the trustees' boxes too, in case you wanted to pick one up. If it's easier, if you don't have a printer or something, it might be easier to view them. If you notice anything that doesn't look right, please let me know. I've looked at these figures so much. Williamson has changed around some of their account numbers. I had to do some changes and go back into our budget. I did notice that our COVID expense line has got an issue. It's off by one digit, so I've got to move that. But if anyone.
You just. We lost you. There you go.
Right. I don't know what, how much you heard, but if anyone sees anything, did you hear about the COVID part?
Yep.
Okay. If anyone sees anything else like that that doesn't look quite right, the digit is off in the account or something, please let me know. I tried to look over everything and I'll look it over again as I post the following month. So just let, let me know.
Okay, thanks, Anna.
All right, thank you.
Senior Center, Ruth?
I just want to let this board know that the Canton Woods Board met this morning and they did approve the proposed 2022 budget for Canton Woods. And also want to thank Anna for her help in preparing that so that piece is done. There's a very small increase from last year, $1,573.09. So we're staying right on track there. Also, I want to thank Chuck. Today, he led a walk around the building to take a look at things and create a list for long-range planning of what needs to be done to the building. And I think Trustee Seiko, she also participated in that along with our board chair. So we were able to create the list for the next few years going forward. I want to remind the folks that it is open enrollment right now for your Medicare. It's open now through December 7th. This is a time, if you want to make any change, you can do that. If you need help, have any questions, please call us. The Office for Aging is holding a webinar and we can get you that information and we can also get you phone contact if you'd rather talk with someone on the phone. And there's a flu shot clinic coming up on October 22nd. This will probably be our last one. So October 22nd, Flu Shot Clinic, 9:00 AM to noon. Don't have to make a reservation. Just come and bring your insurance card. And Senator Mannion is having a senior fair open to everyone on October 19th at the SRC Center at OCC. And that's an opportunity to get some resources and information as well. And that's open to the public. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
No questions? Okay, we'll move on to Public Works. Chuck?
Yep, the summer's winding down here. You'll see our hanging flowers are down. We're going to be going back in and taking some of the other barrels out tomorrow. Then we'll be slowly rolling the streets up with the garbage cans and the benches and what have you. We got our first sander in today, just starting to get ready for the winter months. One of the biggest problems, I came back from the superintendent's meetings, one of the biggest problems everyone's having is they just can't get parts, you know, and if something's broke, can't get it fixed, can't get it delivered, just, so we're trying to start a little ahead of the game here and get going on some of that. Our bridge lights, the dam lights, excuse me, we keep mixing the dam lights with the bridge light, but the dam lights, there's a problem with them. They've melted. One side's almost melted completely. The other side, not quite so bad, but I've been in contact with them and they're going to warranty them. I believe we're going to be sending those out soon. We just got the confirmation today. There's a little confusion on what it's going to cost, but it looks like it's going to be a warranted item. So we're still desperately trying to get a better programming for them. The, the programming is just not user-friendly. We have to program those, those lights by the minute. And to make a change is difficult, but but that said, we're moving on with that. Water Department is making some headway with meters. People are being really well, letting us in the house now. For the longest time, we couldn't get in houses. People are being very good about that. They're, they're moving, moving ahead with that really well. The highway's been, this summer, you know, between brush pickup and we have taken down almost 140 trees ourselves on the, on the street right-of-way trees. And this includes, they go through and they take the tree, then we go right behind it lots of times the same day, grind the stumps and topsoil them. And it's made a big difference in, in the developments. People are really happy with that because normally, by the time you take a tree down, the stump gets ground. It's just, it's just, it looks terrible out front. And we're sad to have to take all these ash trees down, but we just do. They're just, they're just dying, falling. And 90% of the people are being real receptive about it. But it's really helped that we've gone right through and ground them, ground the stumps in their yards. Their, their yards without a tree, but it looks, it looks a little better. First pick-up trees. We're having all kinds of problems in the parks with the graffiti was damaged under the bridges. And it's been worse this year in spending, in quite a while. This week, the toilets were knocked off the floor in Mercer Park. We've been talking back and forth with Mike with the police department. Jeez, if anybody knows who these kids are, they're the same signature on some of the graffiti. But it's gone on way too long. And we're two or three times a week taking paint out of the walls down there. We had to paint under the whole bridge here by the cottage today. There was probably 30 different things on the wall. One of the police department sergeants called me last night and they saw that. We got down there this morning and painted it. But somebody knows who's doing this. I mean, it's, it's the same signature on a lot of it, but just wanted to throw that out there also. Other than that, unless there's questions, we're, we're moving on.
Chuck, if you have any photos that you wanted to post on our Facebook page or something of the of the specific graffiti that seems to be repeated.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I mean, it's, it costs us money to have to remove this stuff. And I wouldn't be opposed to trying to put a reward out for information about leading to somebody's identification so they can come and do the work to overpaint it.
Okay, I'll get together with Mike and just let him know where we are with that. And, but we definitely have all kinds of pictures and, and we send a lot to, to the police and.
And some of the pictures we wouldn't want to post.
Well, well, there's that. Yeah, right. But there is some with, I mean, some of these kids are pretty talented. I mean, with their signatures and they're really good artists. And, and there's one that keeps coming up all the time and that we see, you know.
Do you have a picture of that signature?
We do.
It could be maybe shared with some of the art folks at the high school who might come across it themselves.
I, I had talked to Lieutenant up there and, and he had told me that they were, they were talking with the school to see, to think of, look into that a little bit.
So. Just a question, Chuck, and I think this is important for taxpayers to know. How, how much would you guess our guys taking all those trees down has saved us if we had to have a company come in and do it?
I talked to our engineer briefly and it's kind of hard to put a, a number on some of that, but they were telling, he was telling us, it's close to $175,000 to $200,000 worth of trees that we've taken down. I mean, there's just a lot of trees and it's expensive. And a lot of it, we're fortunate because some of the developments, there's no overhead or hanging wires. You know, there's no wire because it's all underground, electric, on the ground, everything. So that was a little easier for us. But like, you know, we had to take some on Genesee Street in front of the funeral home down and and they've gotten real good at it, but tree work's dangerous, but we, we saved a lot of money. I'll bet you're closer to $200,000 for us all said and done. And that's including grinding and going back. And, and when they weren't picking brush, we were cutting trees this summer.
Wow. Please pass, not pass on to your, your crew that, that, you know, certainly I as a taxpayer, and I'm assuming most taxpayers would appreciate the fact that that was money that we didn't have to spend. And that's great.
So. And they, and they did a great job with it. And it was, and we didn't, nobody got hurt and it was all, tree work's dangerous, but they, they did, they did really well with it.
Oh, great. Thanks, Chuck.
I was, they did one across the street from me the other day and I just happened to be home. And jeez, a little Adam gets up in a bucket truck and just limbs a whole tree and they grab it with the loader and they cut it off and set it down on the ground and go to the next one.
Pretty, pretty talented crew you got there.
Yeah, they worked well.
Yeah, thanks, Chuck.
Yep.
Move on to the police department. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. As Chuck mentioned, we are actively investigating those incidents of graffiti. And if anyone does have any information, we'd ask that you contact our staff and let us know. We are. Uh, we are uh have passed that information along to our school resource officers who in turn talking to uh staff at the school uh to determine any information. Obviously, uh, you know, if, if anyone looks at, at what's going on in, in, in uh schools across the country now with different things going on, tick-tock challenges and such. There's a lot of this type of behavior occurring both in and out of uh school settings. So we're, we're not immune to that. Uh, it's something that we're, we're working on and, and looking into and and doing our best to, to figure out who's doing this. To Chuck's point, uh clearly someone knows who's doing it. Someone has this information. And uh, a- and, and we're, we're going to work our hardest to figure out who it is so we can uh deal with that individual and first and foremost, get it to stop because it is such a nuisance and creates such a problem and um, over the years, we've, we've never had this type of graffiti in, in many, many years. So we're, we're doing our best to, to deal with that and patrol that area. Unfortunately, it doesn't take too long to, to spray paint or do something like that, but um, that's where we are. And uh, I will have comment there when we get to uh, uh two of the items on the agenda. Uh, other than that, uh, that's all I have unless there's questions.
I was going to say we ought to see if Tom Leroy wants to come out and paint over the graffiti. That used to be his big thing every year. He loved to do it.
You know, Tom, to, you know, as soon as graffiti, you know, as soon as it, a- a- and the main thing is as soon as it happens, we need to paint over it and cover it up. Because uh, the, the uh, the, you know, the, the reason to do graffiti is so everyone sees it. Well, if we cover it up immediately, that takes away some of the, some of the purpose there. Um, so and Tom was really good at that. I mean, he, he kept a change of clothes at work and, and would go out there after working with, would, would get some, get some paint and that the village will buy and then he painted himself just to, he didn't want it looking bad. Um, because that's the type of person he is and type of police officer he was and, and uh, and things. So, you know, we're, we're working with Chuck's crew and his, his, his crew's done a great job of covering it up and, and things and uh, uh, I'm, I'm confident we'll we'll, we'll figure this thing out. It's just sometimes going to take a bit and uh, you know, there's a lot going on right now with, with that kind of stuff, unfortunately with our young people today.
And I, I would think it would, would be nice if anybody in the public saw people spray painting that they could make a quick call and give our officers a chance to get there. Uh, I'm sure these people aren't stupid. They're waiting till there's nobody around. Uh, but just to thought to the public, if you see somebody with a can of spray paint heading under the bridge or going into a bathroom down at uh one of the parks, just give nine-one-one a call and then we'll get an officer over there. All right. Thanks chief. Um, we'll move on. We have no pending business. Move on to new business. Um, can I get a motion approving the village justices annual audit for the year ending February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one? Done by Linda Gabor CPA Grossman Saint Amour and authorizing the mayor to sign said audit.
Move.
Um, did you catch those Jody?
Uh, well, who was the first one?
The motion. Who moved the motion?
I did once.
Bruce?
Oh, Bruce, thank you.
Any questions or comments on this motion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item B, can I get a motion to accept the resignation of part-time officer Thomas Nicolini effective October first, twenty-twenty-one? Mark and Andy? Um, we have a motion to second. Mike, you said you wanted to make a comment?
Uh, I'll, I'll actually comment after uh I, I am seeing there.
Okay. All righty, um, with regrets, um, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Item C, I get a motion to accept the resignation of part-time police officer Martin Knoll effective November first, twenty-twenty-one?
Move.
Mark and Megan? Um, comments, Mike?
Uh, thank you mayor. Um, we've kind of had a, a situation here where our three part-time people all the, within a relatively short period of time have, have uh, you know, are moving on and I just wanted to explain what, what, what's occurred. It's unique situations with each one of them. Uh, about a month ago, you had a letter of resignation with the, with, with Officer Giannino, Chaz Giannino, who's a village resident and and Chaz had been with us since the inception of our part-time program eight years ago. Uh, he had changed jobs and uh, his new job was requiring a great deal more travel. And uh, he wasn't able to, to really put in the hours with us, so he indicated he had to step back. Uh, Tom Nicolini uh has retired, uh had retired after well over twenty years with the Syracuse Police Department and he's worked with us for oh, a good year and a half, if not more and he brought a, obviously a wealth of knowledge and experience, having been in the city for, for that long. Uh, but uh, he's, he's found another job uh basically delivering uh express mail at uh uh nearly the same rate he was making with us and the hours are much steadier and, and much more frequent. And so I certainly can't blame him and, and he kind of indicated that uh, you know, he'd be done his tour, done his tour of duty, so to speak, in police work and uh, he was stepping back from that. And then uh, obviously Marty, uh Marty's been with us nearly thirty years in total. Uh, was a longtime SRO, retired last year and, and chose to stay on in a part-time capacity, but if, if you read his letter of resignation, uh, he's indicated he just doesn't have the, the desire to do police work anymore and uh, I don't think after nearly thirty years in, in this business, uh, I can blame him for that. If, if uh Marty had a stand-up career and just did an outstanding job for us the whole time he was here. So that's kind of the situation uh we're in. I did speak to public safety committee earlier this evening, uh trustee Shepherd and Seco and advised them of this and the circumstances. We'll, we'll look and see if we can find some, some part-time people. Um, you know, I, I don't have any applicants right now that have come forward. Uh, we'd like to focus on those retirees because they have so much knowledge and we don't have to train them to be a police officer and uh, and things. So we'll see what comes down the pike, but that's kind of what's happened. Uh, I think if you read all three of their letters of of resignation, they're, they're all very appreciative of having worked for the organization. They speak very highly of us and the village as a whole and the, and the members of the department and and uh, there's no hard feelings amongst any of them and if, and they have them at some point in time decided that they wanted to do it again, I would uh certainly welcome them back because they, they all did uh, did nice work for us. So uh, um, no hard feelings on, on either end.
Thanks chief. And then uh, I, I don't know, Tom, I did know Chaz a little bit. Um, and, and really nice guy and, and obviously Marty Knoll. Um, you know, don't come much better than Marty and uh
No, and, and Tom Nicolini fit in very well with everyone. Easygoing. Um, you know, again, he, he'd done a career in the city of Syracuse, wasn't looking to prove anything to anyone and knew how to take calls, knew how to talk to people, knew how to interact and really represented the organization uh in, in a positive fashion. And, and all three of the people uh during their time here did help us out. Uh, if you remember last year, we were looking to fill Marty's spot. We had another officer that was, that was battling a serious illness and uh, they, they helped fill that gap, bridge that gap during that time period. Um, you know, we are in a fortunate position right now that we are fully staffed uh in our full-time cadres, so, so that softens that blow a little bit.
Right. Okay. Thanks chief.
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion and a second. Yeah, Mark, are you voting or you, you have a question? I saw your hand go up.
I was just anticipating your uh question about voting.
Okay. So we're obviously with regrets uh with Marty leaving, uh, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. All right. Item D, not sure I want to read this one. They get a motion to accept the resignation of treasurer Anna Custer effective December first, twenty-twenty-one? Megan and Ruth? Obviously, this is, this is a tough one just on a personal level. I mean, you know, Anna's part of the family and uh, so it's going to be uh be tough. Uh, we're, we're working on a replacement and uh I don't know. I don't think she'll be too far away. We may see her from time to time, you know, like at Christmas time and things like that because she, like she said, she is part of the family. But we'll have her for a couple of months through December first. So appreciate the fact that she's given us a little lead time and uh anybody uh, can I, we have a motion in the second. Does anybody have any, want to make any comments? You want to wait? We can all wait till December? November?
I'll ask if we, if we uh vote against it, does she have to stay?
I like the way you think, Mark. Anna, what do you think?
Uh, Anna.
My husband was worried that that might happen. He said, could that happen? I said, I don't know.
I'll just comment, the comment on how much I've enjoyed working with you and uh, I'll miss you. You've done a very good, very nice job, very thorough. It's been a challenge. I know you put a lot more time in than you, than you thought you had to. We wanted to pay you more, by the way. So uh, but uh, we'll miss you when it comes around. So thank you for being so diligent.
Thank you. I tried my best.
Hey, can I say a quick thing?
Sure.
I, I know Anna for many, many years, way back in the Celebrate Bonzo days when she was with the bank, you know, you were always there to help us. Everybody likes you, except for when you wouldn't give us money. But e- everybody likes you. She got along with, with, with everyone. When I stepped into this job here a little bit ago, she was so easy to talk to, even though she always said no. But uh, you, you, you will clue be missed Anna. You're a great person and this community is better because of you.
Thank you Chuck. Thank you.
And, and I would say we, we've worked together on a lot of technical stuff, whether it's the uh reserve funds or uh uh some of the issues that come up that were raised with the Canton Woods budget and that sort of thing, which I won't go into. Um, but uh, you, you just did a fantastic job and, and I really am going to miss working with you on those, on those uh items because you really know what you're doing and, and have been a great help to me to uh, uh move these things through as, as the questions come up.
Thank you. I feel the same about you, Bob. You've been really helpful to me and helped me get through things.
All, all I would say is that um, I talked to my wife and I talked to Anna and they both have the same. They're, they're driven by the same desire to get everything right. And so I, it's like, it's like I'm talking to the same person when I'm talking to the two of them. Uh, it's from my point of view, knowing that you know, the buck stops here a lot of times. It's nice to know that you can count on somebody like Anna that's, it, it may not be what I want to hear. Um, you know, remember a, a couple of years ago where we found out that the Pepsi Fund had been kind of overused? And uh, we had to make a big recovery, but we did it and Anna led the way and she's always, I, I, I know she may think, you know, she probably wants to tell me what I want to hear, but she tells me what I need to hear and that's important in my position. And uh, I've just counted on her so much uh as, as a mayor and uh certainly I would vote to tell her she can't go if you guys are all for that, but uh in all fairness, um, you know, I know there's things that, that she needs to do outside of here, so.
My brain is getting tired. My brain is getting tired. I need some new.
Yep. It's a tough job. It's a tough job. Um, uh, you, you've handled it well. So we have a motion in a second. Um, with regrets, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Ah, that was a hard one. Item E, um, can I get a motion to tie, to table item E until the next board meeting? And Megan, in a second from somebody? From Ruth? Um, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. So that's tabled. Um, anything that we need to discuss before we go into executive session? And both of our executive sessions are no uh action planned. Um, so well, with that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session? Mark and Ruth? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? We'll see everybody in two weeks. Um, those of you who need to stay, stay.